Is there anyone that's being appointed or promoted tonight that's waiting on any family members because I could wait a few minutes or I could move around the agenda? No, we're good? Okay. Are we on? Okay, we're on. If the board members could please make sure you have your microphones on, we'll get started. We have a big night tonight. Okay, good evening. At 6:30 PM on Monday, July 28, 2025, I'd like to call to order the Villager Brookfield Board meeting. Would everyone please join me in a pledge of allegiance to the flag?
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mike, we have a roll call, please.
Yeah. Trustee Ketchmark.
Here.
Trustee Whitehead.
Here.
Trustee Hendricks.
Here.
Trustee Narumatsu.
Here.
Trustee Gahuli.
Here.
Trustee Kaluzny. Not present? President Garvey?
Here.
Thank you. Tonight, we have several reappointments and promotions and swearing ins. The first, I entertain a motion to reappoint Doc Mack to the Economic Development Commission for a term expiring July 28, 2028.
So moved.
Second.
The motion was made by trustee Ketchmark, second by trustee Gahuli. Any questions or comments on the appointment? I can just speak from experience that Doc's been a very valuable member of the Economic Development Commission, has served the village very well, and just all the business he has in Brookfield. So, I don't think Doc's here tonight, but I wanted to publicly thank him. We'll arrange for him to be sworn in. But, anything else from the board? Okay, hearing none, roll call, please.
Trustee Ketchmark.
Aye.
Trustee Whitehead.
Aye.
Trustee Hendricks.
Aye.
Trustee Narumatsu.
Aye.
Trustee Gahuli.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you. And next item, I entertain a motion to reappoint Dave Corrello to the Economic Development Commission for a term expiring July 28, 2028.
So moved.
Second.
The motion was made by trustee Ketchmark, second by trustee Hendricks. Same thing about Dave. This Economic Development Commission has done a lot for the village. A new commission we created, kind of learning their way, worked very well with staff and really helped us out. So, appreciate Dave agreeing to be reappointed. Does anyone else have anything on the appointment, reappointment? Okay, hearing none, roll call, please.
Trustee Ketchmark.
Aye.
Trustee Whitehead.
Aye.
Trustee Hendricks.
Aye.
Trustee Narumatsu.
Aye.
Trustee Gahuli.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Okay, the next item does not require a board vote, but we are here tonight to do the promotion of Mark McEwen from police officer to police sergeant. So, I would ask Mark to please come up with his family, if he would like to come up to the village clerk. Any family members or anyone that's here with you wants to come up? Or I can order them to come up? And if any of you have cameras that you would like pictures taken, I'd like you to be in the picture. So, Mark could come right up here by the village clerk, Mike. And anyone else that wants to come up for a better angle of pictures, you can come up this way or give your cameras to anyone over here. Come on up. I know you wanted to. You want to be in the picture? You want to be in the picture? Yeah. Or you want you to be in the picture and give them the camera? Well, bring her, no, bring her up.
We've got trustee Whitehead here.
Mom, please come up.
Part of the duties.
Sorry, Mark, I get to do this.
Come on in all close so you can, we'll get the scared look on his face from this side and you guys can.
I raise your right hand, please. I, Mark McEwen.
Hi, Mark McEwen.
Having been promoted to the office of police sergeant.
Having been promoted to the office of police sergeant.
In the village of Brookfield.
In the village of Brookfield.
In the county of Cook.
In the county of Cook.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of the office of police sergeant.
The duties of the office of police sergeant.
According to the best of my abilities.
According to the best of my abilities.
Congratulations.
Stay up here for some pictures. Congratulations, thank you.
I don't have a Google phone. I'm trying to, I failed in my first photo duty.
I'm going to make this really fast, or at least that's what I told Mark, that I just No, we'll sell you pictures. want to officially welcome and recognize Sergeant McEwen.
Of course. Congratulations.
Congratulations. Thank you so much.
Sergeant McEwen has had, is a dedicated and respected member of our department for over Mark, would you like to say hello to the rest of the board? And then, I'd like you to introduce your family that's with you. 20 years. I've had the pleasure of working alongside him on patrol, both of us together. If you could all stay up here, please. You could face the audience. And I can say that I've come to know him as not, as someone not only smart and strategic,
This is my wife, Christie, my two daughters, Mackenzie and Madeline, my sister-in-law,
but also humble, so much so that he didn't want to do this. I've never seen him this anxious before, so.
Kelly, and my mother-in-law, Patricia.
Thank you for being here, congratulations. He's amazing on the street. And I just want to take a moment to, just a pause and to honor him and his beautiful Before, Chief wants to say a few words, but Christie, would you like to pin his sergeant family for the sacrifices that they've made throughout his career. badge?
It's okay if he bleeds a little bit.
His wife, Christie, and his daughters, Mackenzie and Madeline, have stood by him through the long hours, the ships, the unpredictability, and the demands that our line of work puts on us. Sergeant McEwen has become a leader in this department well before this formal promotion.
There, it's good, that's good.
He's been on a task force, he's been an FTO, Field Training Officer, even just the way
Good job.
he takes fitness and his dedication to being able to do the job physically as well as mentally seriously. It's something that I have admired about him all along. What you may not know about Mark is that he grew up in Virginia, he earned a degree in criminal justice, but we're all lucky to have him here in Brookfield in Illinois. Mark, I just want to tell you, I look forward to seeing you grow in your role, your resolve, your maturity and judgment to guide and support our officers is what makes me so proud to welcome you as Sergeant McEwen and part of our department. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Oh, did I skip? No. I didn't see him here. The next item, again, does this require a vote? No, okay. Next, we have swearing in of our new police officer, Raymond Pantoa Jr. If you could please come up with his family to, in front of our clerk, Lendez. And, again, give your cameras to, Kyle learned how to work the cameras since then. If any of you have Google phones, give it to someone other than Kyle.
That's an iPhone, I could have done that.
But everyone, come on up, close. You got to make room for.
Let me get Officer Pantoa over here.
Ramon's got to be up here, so come on in.
Raise your right hand, please. Repeat after me. Hi, Ramon Pantoa Jr.
Hi, Ramon Pantoa Jr.
Having been appointed to the office of police officer.
I've been appointed to the office of police officer.
In the village of Brookfield.
The village of Brookfield.
In the county of Cook.
The county of Cook.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of the office of police officer.
The duties of office of police officer.
According to the best of my abilities.
According to the best of my abilities.
Congratulations.
There's only three left, it just works out. Congratulations.
Congratulations. Congratulations.
Again, if you'd like to introduce your beautiful family when you're done, saying hello to the board.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
If you could turn around and face the, thank you.
So, this is my mother, Diana, my father, Ramon, my brother, Eddie, my niece, Melanie, my nephew, Royce, my niece, Camila, my sister, Ariana, and then that is Virgie, the woman that I am going after.
So, who gets the honor of sticking you with the pin?
That would be my brother.
All right. Go to it. I don't think it's fully secure. No, he doesn't get points for that. Congratulations. Chief would like to say a few words now. Thank you, thank you, President Garvey. Once again, good evening, everyone, President Garvey, village board trustees. Just want to welcome and introduce officially before our community, Officer Ramon Pantoa Jr. It's my pleasure to welcome you, Officer Pantoa, as a non-probationary officer with our department. Ramon grew up in Joliet and proudly served six years in the US Army, four active and two in the reserves. This experience, along with his strong work ethic and character, has made him a great addition to our team. He wants to credit his family, is what he shared, that he wanted me to bring out here for helping him reach this point, especially his mother, his biggest supporter, and Virgie, whose strength and understanding have not gone unnoticed. Being in relationship with a police officer isn't easy, so, you know, he wanted to make sure you knew that as well. Ramon, congratulations on this milestone, we're proud to have you on board and excited to see what's ahead for you. Welcome. And the board has a gift for you. You're welcome to stay around for the meeting, but you don't have to. We wouldn't be upset if you went to celebrate somewhere with your family. And same thing, Sarge, you're welcome to stick around, but you don't have to. I do want to recognize all the members of the Police and Fire Department here and Police and Fire Commission. It's very nice, they always come out for these things. We do have a very supportive group, so, past officers, past retired firefighters are here, so it really means a lot that they all come out for this. You're joining a great team, so congratulations and go enjoy the evening.
Thank you so much.
And the board has a gift for you. You're welcome to stay around for the meeting, but you don't have to. We wouldn't be upset if you went to celebrate somewhere with your family. And same thing, Sarge, you're welcome to stick around, but you don't have to. I do want to recognize all the members of the Police and Fire Department here and Police and Fire Commission. It's very nice, they always come out for these things. We do have a very supportive group, so, past officers, past retired firefighters are here, so it really means a lot that they all come out for this. You're joining a great team, so congratulations and go enjoy the evening.
Thank you so much.
Congratulations. Did you think Dave Corrello came in? I don't see that nowadays.
I don't think so.
Yeah. Okay, we'll start up again. Well, as, at this point in the meeting, I will open it up to public comment. Is there anyone on this side of the audience? Is there any public comment, my left side? Okay, hearing no public comment there. Is there any public comment on this side? If you please could come up to the microphone and just state your name for the record.
First name, Albert, from Long Island, last name, Free, F R I D H. Twenty-five year resident. I was here about three years ago to talk about wayward trucks on Southview that are delivering and/or picking up from sweetener supply. It's still an issue. I promised my wife I would control my temper, my passion seems to get away with me. I got a transportation background and a safety background. The best way to put this is, there's still, the biggest hazard is turning right from Southview across the railroad tracks. There are defensive issues. For me, it's, in my opinion, it's still an accident waiting to happen. My wife said, offer now, wrench. I would love, I got some time on my hands and mouth. I would love to help, I believe signage, and the root cause is getting sweetener supply a physical address or a shipping address, delivery address on Charlotte. And that may take your help going to possibly the post office, their standard answer is no, I've dealt with the post office previously, private sector, they're not easy. Possibly the state level, up to the governor, maybe the help of Congressman, I believe, Chu Garcia is the congressman here? Possibly him and/or senators, rather than going to a ranch, which I've commented on my report. Is there anybody, is there a way to leave my contact information?
Chief Curvilla in the back, you were talking to Chief earlier.
We've talked to the pastor.
Okay, he'll take your contact information, and he's, we have a committee that reviews these things, so he's part of the committee. So, if you can give, if you want to give him your name and number, Chief will reach out to you if there's any assistance he thinks you could provide.
My wife and my cardiologist will be happy to.
Thank, thanks for coming out tonight.
No, no, no. The players are all mine.
Appreciate it. Okay, is there anyone else on my right side that has any comment? Mrs. Dufek, you were out when I called on this side. Do you have any public comment? Okay, I just, I didn't want to, I didn't want to miss the chance. I know you were out there with your.
Just, I have to sit close, so I hear.
Okay, everybody talk loud so Mrs. Dufek can hear you. Okay, that ends the public comment portion of our meeting. We're going to move on to reports of special committees. Trustee Narumatsu, please.
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion to approve the corporate warrant dated July 28, 2025 for $2,918,216.95.
Is there a second?
Second.
The motion was made by trustee Narumatsu, second by trustee Hendricks. Are there any highlights or anything you want to point out?
Just a lot of payments for, well, there's a final payment for Eller Park, the Eller Park renovation, and then $142,000 for the local, the village share of the Grand Boulevard Improvement Project, a little over $800,000 for lead service lines, and $577,000 for street improvement projects. That's it.
Thank you. Do any board members have any questions or comments about the warrant? Okay, hearing none, roll call, please.
Trustee Ketchmark.
Aye.
Trustee Whitehead.
Aye.
Trustee Hendricks.
Aye.
Trustee Narumatsu.
Aye.
Trustee Gahuli.
Aye.
Motion passes.
With regard to DPW, just wanted to give a big shout out to our Public Works employees for all their work in, help with the Chicago Great Race last Wednesday, and also with the storm clean up from this last, late last week's storms. I know we had a tree go down in our front yard, and they were out there, from my understanding from my husband, they were out there right away. I was out of town, I missed the whole thing, but they were out there very quickly taking care of that. So, thank you to Public Works. And I just also want to note that during these really heavy rain events, you can receive overflow action alerts from the Metropolitan Water Reclamation District. I receive them. They just help you know when they're coming and when they're, the sewers are getting full, because using less water during and before those rainstorms can help relieve the burden on the sewers. As always, you can submit your Public Works tickets using the C-click Fix button on the village website. And that's my report.
Thank you. Trustee Gahuli, Chamber of Commerce.
Yeah, kind of a lot going on with our local businesses in the chamber, so, make sure I don't miss anything here. Yesterday was the car show, the annual car show is held on Broadway. I don't have any details of the, what happened yesterday in terms of the number of cars and et cetera, but I'll tell you what, it was hot out there, and everyone was finding their own little patch of shade to stay out. So, a lot of car enthusiasts out there, really nice to see the Brookfield shops open and have those located so close together, those two events. So, great to see everyone there. Also, the Chicago Grit, right, I'll mention that again, and all the local businesses that were involved with that, you know, notably Irish Times as well, they were right there at the start and the finish line, and a lot of great vendors with their tents up and a lot of open doors in the area, too. So, it was an extremely hot day, but hopefully our businesses enjoyed some, seeing some new faces. The farmer's market is still going on, they've had to deal with a little bit of rain recently, but they have toughed it out. I know even this past Saturday, despite some rain, they had a few vendors opt out, but still, still a pretty good crowd there. So, that's still continuing every Saturday, so I hope you'll come out for that. The 60 to Win Program, this is, and I'm going to read a little bit about this because there's some details that are helpful here, this is an annual program. It is, you can support your favorite Brookfield businesses and score a chance to win some cash or prizes every week. Numbers will be drawn from September 4th through November 6th, but you can buy your tickets now online via the Chamber website at BrookfieldChamber.net, and also at, every Saturday at the Brookfield Farmers Market. So, there will also be a number of local businesses starting to sell their tickets very shortly, too, and some may be doing that already, but you can buy your tickets online, and those will be drawn, just cash prizes, every week starting in September 4th. Next, the National Night Out. So, the Chamber is sponsoring, again, this year, the National Night Out. It is usually on the first Tuesday of every August, so it's August 5th this year, from 5:00 to 7:00 PM at Eller Park. This is to celebrate and honor our first responders. There will be lots of fun for the whole family, it'll be games and snacks and all kinds of things, so come on out to Eller Park between 5:00 and 7:00 PM on Tuesday, August 5th. August 7th, we will be having a ribbon cutting. Balance Brookfield Nutrition is under new ownership, and they'll be doing a ribbon cutting on, on August 7th at 3:00 PM, and everyone is welcome to attend. They're located at 3743 Prairie Avenue, so we're looking forward to that. And then, let's see, the Chamber Business Lunch this month will be on August 21st. It's from noon to 1:15. You can RSVP through the BrookfieldChamber.net website. This will be a catered event held at Daisy's Treats, right on Grand Avenue, and there will be a speaker at this event, Mark Wild. He is the owner of Express Employment Professionals, and he's going to be talking about staffing solutions for small businesses and some other things, so that should be a nice event. Following that, we have, what's next? The Fine Arts Fest, save the date for Saturday, September 7th. This will be happening from 10:00 AM to 4:00 PM at Kiwanis Park. There's a juried art fair, live music, activities for all ages, lots of art, so this should be a really wonderful day in Kiwanis Park. So, I hope to see everybody out for that. Just two last things, we hope you, I know there's been a lot of construction on Grand Avenue, and right now, we're in that final stages, right, at least for the street of the paving, so, and realize that's closed, but those businesses are still open, and pedestrian access is still open and available, so maybe find some other parking or walk down to our shops to continue to support our businesses there. And then, finally, the Chamber, next regular meeting is August 11th at noon in the lower level of the Linda Sokal Francis Brookfield Library. And then, that's my report.
Thank you to the Chamber, just listing all the things they do for our community.
There are things going on, right?
It's a few things. And that, the fundraiser, the tickets, raffle tickets is a great way to support them, and it's a chance to win. And I think they still do it, if you win, they put your name back in, you don't just get one chance.
Absolutely, throw your number right back in, yep.
So, all these events that they do and help support and partner with the village and other groups couldn't happen without their volunteers, and they do need the funds also, so please support them and thank them for all the work they do.
You can also, and I didn't mention this, but you can go now, it is, should be on Sway Dance Chicago's website as well, if you want to put your name in the hat to be, if you're a look, part of a local business or any organization that's part of the Chamber, and you might want to be considered for the next Dancing with the Chamber, to be a dancer, you can now put your own name in there and see if they pick you.
And members of the village board could do that.
The members of the village board and our fire employees and staff are welcome to do that. It's fun.
No one is looking at each other.
All right, thank you very much, trustee Gahuli. Trustee Hendricks, planning and zoning and library?
Yes, and I have, I'm going to start with Conservation Commission this week. Last week, Tuesday, they met, and they're always busy, they are always working on so many things, but a couple of highlights, you may have seen them out at the farmer's market, they are taking down thoughts from the community on where we need bike racks and EV charging stations and where those would be best in the community. Then, last Friday, I wasn't able to be out there, but they had their last meeting with the National Park Service about the trails at Creekside, or, well, South, Kiwanis, Creekside Park. So, I'm looking forward to hearing how that went. Hopefully, trustee Kaluzny will be able to update us on that when she gets back and after their next meeting. The library board met on Wednesday, they scheduled their annual budget meeting for the 11th of September at 7:00 PM, and the Plan Commission met on Thursday. They went over three cases with one that was withdrawn for a coffee roastery. There was a sign variance and a garage balken setback case, both of which were passed unanimously and will be coming to us on August 4th, and a couple of variances to, to put in a potential daycare, which will be coming, which was passed unanimously as well, and will be coming to us on.
You said August 4th, the previous, but I think August 11th is our actual meeting.
Those were.
Second Monday?
Okay, that.
25th.
The second meeting, well, the.
But didn't we, oh, we canceled.
That's right. Okay, so then they will all, all right, then they will, you're right, they will all be going to August 25th then, I think. Okay. And that's my report.
That sounds right. I forgot we canceled the first meeting, just to give the board members a chance to travel if they needed to, so, but August, so the first meeting in August will be, is.
The 25th.
Correct. Okay. Thank you, trustee Hendricks, and thank you for reporting for trustee Kaluzny, could not be here tonight. Trustee Ketchmark, anything on administration, economic development?
The Economic Development Commission met Wednesday, July 16th, continued discussion on the economic incentive policy, which we will have up for approval here shortly. There was brief discussion on the business retention survey, which is ongoing, and they did come forward with the recommendation of support for the placemaking grant for the Brookfield Shops at Progress Park. So, we'll be having additional discussion on that coming forward. That concludes my report.
Thank you, trustee Ketchmark. Trustee Whitehead, Parks and Recreation?
Parks and Rec met on July 15th. This was their first meeting since the Fourth of July parade, so they, like, I know all of us, were really pleased and grateful for all the work from village staff and making that a big success. There was some discussion and interest in seeing if we have the ability in future years to, to secure a small budget for additional parade participants, so they are, I think, planning to bring that conversation forward as part of the budget workshop in, in the fall. We are now accepting registrations, school year right around the corner, so before and after school care, the Stars program in districts 95 and 103, serving children from kindergarten through fifth grade, you can register for Stars at BrookfieldIllinois.gov and just click on the Register for Recreation Programs button, and you will be routed to Stars registration. The free Friday night concert series at Kiwanis continues this Friday. unanimously and will be coming to us on August 4th, and a couple of variances to, to put in a potential daycare, which will be coming, which was passed unanimously as well and will be coming to us on...
You said August 4th, the previous, but I think August 11th is our actual meeting.
Those were...
Second Monday?
Hmm, okay, that...
25th.
The second meeting, well, the...
But didn't we ca...
The first meeting was canceled.
Oh, we canceled?
That's right, okay, so then they will all, all right, then they will, you're right, they will all be going to August 25th then, I think. Okay, and that ends my report.
That sounds right. I forgot we canceled the first meeting, just to give the board members a chance to travel if they needed to, so, but August, so the first meeting in August will be, is?
The 25th, correct.
Correct, okay. Thank you, Trustee Hendricksen, thank you for reporting for Trustee Kalusny, could not be here tonight. Trustee Ketchmark, anything on Administration, Economic Development?
The Economic Development Commission met Wednesday, July 16th, continued discussion on the economic incentive policy, which we will have up for approval here shortly. There was brief discussion on the Business Retention Survey, which is ongoing, and they did come forward with the recommendation of support for the placemaking grant for the Brookfield Shops at Progress Park. So, we'll be having additional discussion on that coming forward. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Trustee Ketchmark. Trustee Whitehead, Parks and Recreation?
Parks and Rec met on July 15th, this was their first meeting since the Fourth of July Parade, so they, like, I know all of us, were really pleased and grateful for all the work from village staff and making that a big success. There was some discussion and interest in seeing if we have the ability in future years to, to secure a small budget for additional parade participants, so they are, I think, planning to bring that conversation forward as part of the budget workshop in, in the fall. We are now accepting registrations, school year right around the corner, so before and after school care, the Stars Program in Districts 95 and 103, serving children from kindergarten through 5th grade. You can register for Stars at BrookfieldIllinois.gov and just click on the Register for Recreation Programs button, and you will be routed to Stars Registration. The Free Friday Night Concert Series at Kiwanis continues this Friday, August 1st, at 7:00 o'clock with The Vaughan Building, a classic rock band. Sales continue for the annual Brookfield Duck Race in September, benefiting the Brookfield Parks and Rec Foundation, which raises money to help low-income families access park programs all throughout the year. Ducks are $5 each, it went up to $1,000. You can buy ducks in person at the farmer's market each week or online at tinyurl.com/brookfieldducks. The Commission meets next on Tuesday, August 19th at 6:30 PM here at Village Hall.
Thank you, Trustee Whitehead. Trustee Kalusny is not here, she had a family matter that she was assisting in. In terms of, there's no new reports on the solid waste, or WCMC, they have not met since our last meeting, or really anything new with the Brookfields, although we continue to have discussions with them on many items. And again, I would just like to, just briefly, again, the reminder that former Trustee Gote always gave us, I'd like to just continue that. If you are a veteran in need of assistance, you can do so through the Jesse Brown VA Medical Center. Please call 312-569-6177, you can start with enrollment. If you're struggling or know somebody who is struggling, please call 988. If you're a veteran, please call 988-OPTION1. We're dealing right now with as many as 22 veterans a day who are taking their life and we would like to put a stop to that as soon as possible. The VA has a national, a national coaching and care program as well, where licensed psychologists and social workers are willing to talk to you by phone. We have these items up on our website, the village website, under the Community section. It will tie you over to the VAC, which is the Veterans Affairs Commission of Cook County, and they have a lot of other numbers. There's a lot of phone numbers for homelessness, et cetera, and other issues, all these things for veterans that you can take advantage, so please take a moment, check that page out. If you don't have access to a computer to look at that, the library here in Brookfield, they do loan out computers, so you can go there, you can check out a computer, you can go to these websites and you can get help with it. Just those very important reminders for veterans and people who might be struggling. And I just wanted to add my thanks to, you know, the Chicago grit race went off tremendously. It was an extremely hot day, it was an extremely, you know, the day itself was very long with the heat and the setup and the takedown and everything else, but the weeks and months that went up into planning it, just from a village staff standpoint, I know every department was involved in one way or another, and it really went incredible. It was an incredibly long day for Public Works and Police and Fire, and we got the whole event covered extremely well, and there was no incidents that I was aware of. I'd also like to thank Chris Valdez and Cycle Brookfield. We have become a cycling community because of them and we are very well-known, and I had the benefit of listening to the Chicago grit people and the cyclists just praise Brookfield for their cycle-friendly nature, the course, the track, just the way we were set up and the professionalism of our staff, so I wanted to publicly thank them, as well as all the volunteers. That day, the new route provided a lot of challenges and, you know, crossing points and there was members of Cycle Brookfield volunteers out there. The Brookfield Women's Club was very well represented and that was a long, hot day out there and just people who, the people in Brookfield who always just step up and help out, these things can't happen without them, so I just wanted to publicly say thanks to them. And actually, I felt bad that night when I left because it was a late night, it was a long day, and I said to, you know, the Public Works and the few Police and Fire that were there, I said, you know, "Go home, take it easy, tomorrow will be easy," and then we got hit with a big storm and Public Works was right back out there, taking down branches, cleaning up the streets, getting everything clear as possible, and I know that took over a day and a half, and I think we had a little bit of rain and flooding the next day, so. These days, I, you know, and sometimes people tell me when I thank our employees that they're paid for this, they are paid for this, but these are long days, long hours, and they go above and beyond and the resident service they provided in those last couple of days. And just looking back, when you mentioned the Fourth of July Parade, this is, just think about what they've done this month, the Fourth of July Parade, the concerts in the park, you know, Luke's staff for Parks and Recreation, you know, doing the parks, these things all take a lot of time and it's not nine-to-five work, so, big thank you to all our employees, staff and volunteers for making these things happen, because people have had a good month, they've really enjoyed things, but that's the reason it's happened, because of all the volunteers, so my big thank you to everyone, so.
Can I add one thing on to this?
Please.
That people might not know about, so one thing, the Cycle Brookfield, in bringing this type of event here and partnering with organizations like SRAM, S-R-A-M, who's the organization that actually sponsored the whole Chicago grit for the Chicago region this year, one of the things that SRAM does, so now I feel like we're kind of a little bit part of it, they have, they initiate and then partner with other companies and an organization called World Bicycle Relief, where they provide bicycles to, with microfinancing loans to people in developing nations, so that help, for instance, young girls who can't go to school because they have to support their communities by walking 10 miles to go get, you know, jugs of water to then bring back, and there's a lot of issues along the way, it takes them out of school because there's, takes so much time, they get sexually assaulted along the way, there's all kinds of terrible things about having to do that, and they have, this organization now through SRAM, has provided 869,000 bicycles, special kind of bicycle called a buffalo bike, that is made and then sent directly to them and assembled, it started businesses there where there's now mechanics in those local villages, they put them together, they support them, and it has now enabled these girls to go to school. What used to be, you know, multi, or like, two-hour walk for them is now a 20-minute bike ride, so they're safer, they can now go to school, they've even put things in place where those bicycles can't be taken from them by other villagers or family members or else the bicycles get taken away from, from that community. So, it's pretty amazing and just, I feel like our community now being part of supporting this type of event and organization is, has really bigger consequences.
I didn't know that, that's great, thanks for letting us know, I didn't hear that, but that's, that's tremendous. And we will talk about future Chicago grit races and Cycle Brookfield events and we'll give everyone a chance to recover and we'll talk about the rest of it in the future, so. I just wanted to say that thank you tonight, so. That ends the reports of Special Committees, so at this point, I'd entertain a motion to pass the Omnibus Agenda.
So moved.
Second.
The motion was made by Trustee Hendricks, second by Trustee Whitehead. Roll call, please.
Trustee Ketchmark?
Aye.
Trustee Whitehead?
Aye.
Trustee Hendricks?
Aye.
Trustee Narumatsu?
Aye.
Trustee Ghulie?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Moving on to the items we have under Regular Business, I'd entertain a motion to pass an ordinance to amend Chapter 6, Section 102 of the Village Code to allow Class 14 liquor license holders to hold a Class S liquor license in Chapter 6, Section 103, to exempt Class 14 liquor license holders from the food service requirement.
So moved.
Second.
The motion was made by Trustee Narumatsu, second by Trustee Ketchmark. We discussed this at the last committee, the whole meeting, this was kind of a cleanup to kind of allow what has been going on, that the board was aware of, where allowing these places to operate and have the outdoor areas and have food trucks, so. Any other questions or comments from the board? Okay, hearing none, roll call, please.
Trustee Ketchmark?
Aye.
Trustee Whitehead?
Aye.
Trustee Hendricks?
Aye.
Trustee Narumatsu?
Aye.
Trustee Ghulie?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. And the next item is related, that specifically to Imperial Oak Brewing, I'd entertain a motion to pass an ordinance issuing a Class S liquor license to Imperial Oak Brewing.
So moved.
Second.
The motion was made by Trustee Hendricks, second by Trustee Ketchmark. Any questions or comments on this? Again, we discussed it at the previous committee with the previous item. Okay, hearing no questions, roll call, please.
Trustee Ketchmark?
Aye.
Trustee Whitehead?
Aye.
Trustee Hendricks?
Aye.
Trustee Narumatsu?
Aye.
Trustee Ghulie?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Moving on to the next item, I'd entertain a motion to pass a resolution to adopt an economic incentive policy.
So moved.
Second.
The motion was made by Trustee Hendricks, second by Trustee Ghulie. Any questions or comments on this? Again, this was tremendous amount of work for staff, bringing it forward, the Economic Development Commission did an excellent job at vetting it to the board, I think we discussed this over two committee meetings and provided a lot of input, and we realize it's a living, breathing document, it can change, but this is something that's going to take us even further in our economic development. We know developers, you know, look for these things and it will now be available. Any other questions or comments from the board? Okay, hearing none, roll call, please.
Trustee Ketchmark?
Aye.
Trustee Whitehead?
Aye.
Trustee Hendricks?
Aye.
Trustee Narumatsu?
Aye.
Trustee Ghulie?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you. And then the final item under Regular Business, I'd entertain a motion to pass a resolution to approve an agreement with SB Freedman to provide tax increment financing consulting services regarding the provincial, potential development of a new TIF district.
So moved.
Second.
The motion was made by Trustee Ketchmark, second by Trustee Ghulie. As the memo explains, this became necessary, the Ogden Avenue TIF is due to expire on September 8th, 2031, and the Congress Park TIF, which was created a few years later, will end on November 28th, 2034. There are potential development opportunities coming before the board that would benefit from having the TIF in place for a longer period of time, so SB Freedman has advised us in the past, and they're very experienced on the TIF matters, and we're involved in the original creation, we're hiring them for consulting services to inform the board of their options on how we might prolong TIFs or create a new TIF basically going forward, so. Questions or comments from the board?
Two, two questions. The study area that's being proposed, is that only the properties that we own within that area?
That's the target area, but we would expand it out a little bit as well, and, and as President Garvey just kind of pointed out, no, don't know exactly yet, we're going to use SB Freedman and staff, and Libby and I will talk to them and then try to refine it, but what we're looking for is understanding what will give us the most potential flexibility to work with potential developers for a project. We don't know exactly which properties that'll include, and so the study will look at, that general area is the target area, and certainly the properties that we already own will be primary focus, but we'll be looking a little broader than that as well.
What kind of timeframe to implementing the new TIF?
No timetable, we've got, we've got months, a year.
But, but in terms of, I mean, it mentions in here, we've got a TIF expiring in five years, one expiring in eight years, what kind of timeframe are we looking at before we could have a new TIF in place that would help us? It's at least a couple of years, isn't it?
Well, I don't know about a couple of years, but it generally...
I think it depends on what their recommendation is, if it's, you know, creating a new TIF or amending the existing TIF, I think there's different timeframes based on that, and it's so it kind of comes down, I think there's a wide range of timeframes that could come into play. We're trying to do this, we're starting this now, knowing that it might take longer, but we might need less.
But is it an option to extend, I mean, it's an option to extend the two TIFs, but if we're trying to look at a development, this development would overlap these two districts, right? The way they sit now, I mean, we have properties in both the districts.
Most likely, most likely, yep.
Right. Does that work? I mean, how do you do TIF incentives across two different districts? So, I mean, is that part even an option or is it?
That's one of the things that SB Freedman will be opining on and helping us navigate through.
If I could, Jeff Dickinson from SB Freedman.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't see the, do you mind coming up to the microphone so I can hear, I'm sorry, I didn't realize that was you.
You're right.
Should have recognized you.
I love considering.
If you'd just state your name for the record, please.
Sure, Jeff Dickinson, SB Freedman Development Advisor.
Sure.
There was a question, I guess, and I probably don't understand the whole context, but in terms of creating a new TIF district, the normal timeline is six months from the start of our work, so that doesn't mean you have to do it that fast, but that's a normal process, assuming the board wants to proceed. I've done it a little faster, but not really much, there's a three-month notice and approval process that's statutory defined, so usually it takes us three months to do our work, a few months for the process, but it can go slower than that. We should go much faster.
Okay. I think based on, I mean, when Trustee Ketchmark was around when we created the TIFs, I mean, I think the overall process we took, started, took longer because we were starting from scratch, it was the first time we had done it, but I know, there's, again, we're not saying by pass, if the board passes this resolution, we are not saying we are creating a new TIF. We are hiring professional advice to give us options, how it might fit in with what our future plans may be for potential developments that are coming and based on land that we've acquired. Does that answer your question? Do any other board members or any other questions while we have representative from SB Freedman here?
I think just to clarify, the benefits of potentially creating a one-TIF district, is it, is it just simplification? I mean, we don't know necessarily the implications of having two different TIF districts for one development, so would it just help simplify to have one TIF district? Is that why we're finding it necessary to do that now, to do this now before any of the TIF districts?
I think we're, we're going to ask, that'll be a question for Freedman to help us analyze and understand what, what positions the village the best to potentially move to the future with the development. We don't have, we don't know what the development is going to be yet, that's one of the challenges, but we do know, in anybody we've talked to, they need to make it economically feasible for them to do whatever they want to do, they're going to need more than five or six years of increment to incentivize them to do the project that they want to do. Nobody we've talked to would be willing to do it for less than five years, and so we do know something's got to happen, and the question now is, would be turned to the experts, and they'll ultimately talk to staff and we'll talk to the board, we'll outline what those options are, why, pros and cons of each, and what the recommended course of action is, and perhaps by then we will have crystallized and synthesized the kind of preferred development that, that we'd like to pursue.
Okay, thank you.
And again, I think the confusion, there may be some confusion with the memo, by passing this resolution, we're not establishing a new TIF or saying we're going to establish, that's one of the options that might come out, SB Freedman's recommendations, but we do need their advice and our options going forward, so.
So, would you say, are we still in a good timeframe here, like before, and we've got like five and seven years or so respectively before they expire, is it still good timing to do what we're doing? Are we in a rush?
I think so, yeah, the goal, I think, to, to his point, is to sync up any decisions with development projects. You know, you don't want to have a TIF that, again, you know, five years from having development projects, you don't want to, so you don't want to wait that long, so, but sometimes that's the case, sometimes we'll create a TIF and then they burn the time, you know, before they ever get it, and I think you were much closer to that moment of TIF designation work and making a deal, I don't know if they're going to be that close together, but they're pretty close together, so.
Yeah.
I think that's fine, five years is, I think the TIF's point is right on, they're essentially non-functioning districts from a development perspective at this point, they're useful, but you can't do a big complicated project that needs a bunch of help with that kind of direction.
Right.
So, you need a new solution to have a, to do the impactful project that we understand is the goal.
And this became right with the recent land acquisitions, I mean, this might be, it's something we might not be addressing, and if we didn't, weren't able to acquire the land that we did recently, so.
Yeah, I, I like the approach, yep.
Okay.
One other point to the mayor's point.
Please.
You know, by taking the acquisitions, taking the base values down, I presume, but obviously, but when, you know, the base is high, there's less increment created, once the base is down to zero due to this ownership, all the taxes are incremental taxes, so the tools are more powerful because of the steps that you are taking as a board, so that is a good fact, you know, the duration extension is a good fact, the lower basis is a good fact, so there's, I think it's aligning the tools to fit your needs.
Perfect. Thank you so much for being here tonight, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from the board? Okay, we do have a motion in a second, can we have a roll call, please?
Trustee Ketchmark?
Aye.
Trustee Whitehead?
Aye.
Trustee Hendricks?
Aye.
Trustee Narumatsu?
Aye.
Trustee Ghulie?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you. That ends the items we have under Regular Business on the board agenda. Tim, do you have anything in the manager's report?
Yes, President Garvey, couple, couple items. First item is, I just want to clarify and, and confirm that yes, we have canceled, the board has canceled the August 11th meetings, the next village board meeting will be August 25th. Second of all, I don't typically like to do it this way, but time is of the essence, and so, we are, as has been mentioned by one of the trustees in, in your report, we are reaching, thank goodness, the final stages of the Grand Boulevard Streetscape Project. Today was the first of three days where the street will be completely closed down to all traffic, hopefully by Thursday will be reopened, the lights are off, the trees will be going in in a few weeks. What came to my attention today is my favorite topic, I know the board's favorite topic is banners, and what, what banners were going to be, intended to be going back up on these brand-new, beautiful, state-of-the-art streetlights. I, I found out today that, I was just kind of assuming, we, we've had a subcommittee meeting with Trustee Hendricks and Trustee Ketchmark, staff, along with White and Company, we met, with Trustee Hendricks and Trustee Ketchmark, staff, along with White and Company, we met, we haven't met now for a while, but we talked about elements of this, I think our last meeting was over a year ago, and I don't recall this, and I recall it today, that, that the thought, that the statement was made, the new ban, the new streetlight brackets for banners will not match our existing banners. Okay, so, we have a couple of choices, what, in terms of what do we want to do to unveil, we're kind of working towards August 30th as kind of the quote-unquote grand open, that's when the knockout, super-popular concert is going to be on, on our 2025 debut of the Streetscape Project and the concert's on Grand, and so, we're kind of working towards what can we do to make the project and the area and the Streetscape look as nicely as possible for that first concert and then for the foreseeable future. In banners, we, the board has a couple of decisions you could make or not make, and that purpose up tonight is I really need direction very, very soon, as I found out today, that the old banners will not be available, they won't fit in the new streetlights. Three options for the board to consider if you so choose. First is to do nothing, we can have no banners on the light poles, everything else will be in place, the street furniture will be there, everything will be done, but there'll be no banners, that is certainly an option. Second option, I'll go back to in a second, we, if the board can decide, the, those three design options from Bannerville, that's a company we've used in the past for banners, and they could do those, produce them in quantities that we need, and install them by August 30th. If we do Grand-only, one of those banners, it'd be about $2,000, if we wanted to extend, extend that around Brookfield Avenue, and bearing in mind that the project is now moving down towards, they have to wrap up Grand, but now they're starting to move towards more work being done on Brookfield Avenue and all the way east to its terminus, we could do that, and that would cost about $3,300. Thirdly, we can, if we want to use the banners that would, that would have been up there last summer, and typically are up there in the summer, much like we did on Eight Corners, if you remember, when we put those new streetlights up, those banners had to be, they can be extended, or they can be modified by a contractor, and we could get that done and installed by August 30th. So the choices are do nothing, choices are choose one of these three, which is kind of like stock that they have, ready to go, we can play around with the wording, all of these say Village of Brookfield, my mouse isn't really showing, oh, they all say Village of Brookfield, Village of Brookfield, Village of Brookfield, they all have, these two are kind of primarily summer-focused, this is a little more kind of, not really season-focused. If you want to change the verbiage, I think that could happen, but these would be the three base designs that we could get done and installed one of these three by August 30th. So again, I'm sorry to, to kind of foist this on you, but.
And just, I mean, this is, I mean, this is something, the, the dollar amount is within staff's authority, they can do, I think this is more of a.
Yes.
Looking for direction from board, where I'm not going to ask, we can't do a formal vote, we're not going to do a formal vote, it's more, if there's a consensus from the board to give direction to staff, because of the time constraints and where we're at, so could you go back, I mean, maybe go back to the three options, and again, just trying to figure out what the board, is, is there anyone in favor of the first option, installing no banners for the August Grand Opening, and take more time to decide which permanent banners to be installed? Is anyone in favor of that option? I'm getting two noes, Trustee Ketchmark's remaining silent.
I think, I can't really answer that unless I, we address the other ones too, because I have.
Okay, all right, is there, is there someone that's advocating for two or three? Item two, two or three? Anyone want to modify? I, I got them.
Where are last year's?
That was my question.
Do you have a picture of last year's banners? I'm not sure which ones you're referring to.
Last year's banners for the summer.
He had the white background.
The Come Out and Play.
Come Out and Play.
Right, the Come Out and Play, the ones.
Oh, those, okay. I like those better than the ones we just saw, only because my number-one take on banners is they have to be readable, and those Village of Brookfield ones, you cannot read that text, and I would rather have nothing than have that.
When you say you can't read the ones she, he showed for.
Correct.
Okay, so though.
You cannot read those.
Okay.
Walking or driving by, it's, I'm having a hard time from here, right, and I, it's, it's not readable to me.
Okay.
Waste of space. So, but if we have something more graphic, and I, I do want to update, then I'm not stuck on the Come Out and Play ones, I would love to have something new, but those are definitely much more readable and memorable than those.
So you're more, you're basically in favor of, I mean, you, item two, where we get new banners made that fit the polls?
I think she's saying option three.
I'm saying three, unless you can update two to make it readable, if not.
So if we could, I, I'm assuming we could play with a font size, so if we can make that lettering bigger, more, more noticeable, then would you prefer option two or three?
I would be okay with two, if we could make it more readable, but if we went with the yellow one, I don't care for the others.
Yep.
I also like the yellow one.
I'm sorry?
I also like the yellow one. If you could make it bigger.
These are only up in the summertime, is it?
That's what we'd start with.
Yeah.
Trustee Whitehead, welcome to the board, we're going to have more conversations with banners and.
I mean, I, I also like the yellow one, it, it just seems like a seasonal mismatch to me because there's no leaves, and for like, a symbol of summer, but the text is clearest there, and the design, I think, is, is clearest.
Okay.
I agree about the, the readability, but I like the simplicity of these three designs, this single color, the monochrome sort of look, it's very eye-catching on all three of them, so that idea I like, but one thing that I think is very important is consistency across town, so if this is the only place that we're going to have these banners, that's going to be kind of rough.
I think so too. Is there a cost, do we know a cost of modifying that third option or not? Because that would impact my decision there too.
I don't, I mean, if we use the ones we already have and make them, I would imagine it'll be probably a little bit cheaper than this, I, I've called.
But you would be in favor of modifying the existing ones we have, because you said you can't read them, is that what we're talking about, modifying?
No.
No.
I misunderstood that.
No, I think what Trustee Gahuli was saying is, do we have, do I have a cost for option three, which was taking last year's banners and extending them a little bit, and I, I think it'd be relatively inconsequential, the cost.
I think if we want to do something great, then let's, let's take the time to not use like clip art, and you do something great, because it is going to be throughout town, and it should be memorable, should be, you know, what people think of when they go through Brookfield.
Well, here, everyone seems to want to have some banners up for the Grand Opening in August. Trustee Cut, our Trustee Gahuli and Trustee Narumatsu said that they liked the yellow, I mean, I guess, I'm just, I'm not, I'm not getting in on this one, I'm, I'm very bad at this, designs and everything else, so, you guys get, they're much better at this, so just, so far, I, I think that's the plurality right now, is Trustee Gahuli and Trustee Narumatsu, they like the yellow ones, and, but, you know, Trustee, again, I'm not saying, but the, the, I agree with Trustee Whitehead that no leaves on a tree.
Yeah, it's kind of weird, right? I just don't like them, but I'm not going to get into it, I just really don't.
I think we need to spend a couple more hours on this, so let's just retrofit the ones we have.
We're, we're literally years into talking about banners.
I know, I'm trying so hard not to.
And unfortunately, what usually happens is what's happening right now, and we come up with some banner to put out there, and it looks like crap.
Yeah.
We, we've done that time after time after time, you know.
We need a graphic designer to do this, this is.
And, and. I could have sworn we had this discussion, and it was asked if these, the banners would be the same size. I thought it was, but.
Back a year ago, you mean, when we were.
Yeah. And there were two banners on them, you know, then, now there'd only be one, but I, I could have sworn we had that discussion about the height of the banners to match up with that, because we can make, we could have made that anything we wanted.
I, I spoke to Derek about this this afternoon, and he said that, it was reiterated that meeting a year or so ago, was that, for whatever reason, the, the size would be off, just like it was on, on Broadway.
Does it match the ones on Broadway?
The size, I'm not sure.
Now Broadway's the full-length one.
Yeah.
I, I, you know, modify what we have there and put those up for now, you know, short of that, I like the yellow, but like we're all talking about, that really looks out of place here. If there's minimal cost to modifying the others for right now, you know, I don't know how we move beyond that, again, we're, we're years into this, you know, it's silly to have light posts up there for banners and not have anything up there, it, it, that looks bad.
Yeah, I agree, option three.
And just give staff the, the direction to modify them the best we can and get, I mean, here, this is important, and it's, you know, we're, it's thousands, it's $3,000 more, possibly, things like this, but that doesn't mean these are the banners for life, and then eventually, I'll, I'll call a special board meeting so we can spend three hours one night and just, once and for all, decide on what banners we want, what size and everything